Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 7th Tuckahoe Village Board Meeting. Will everyone please rise for the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Present.
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 Present, and this morning we have no appointments, so we'll go straight into presentations, and we'll start off with the Tuckahoe Geocaching Project. Hi. I think the mic is not on. No? Wade?
Yeah, hello?
Okay, there you go.
All right.
Just state your name and address, please.
Julie Fortier, 29 Sylvan Avenue. I'm super excited to talk about the Geocaching Project tonight. This is a project that we started earlier this year, I think in February, we approached a board and asked to do this special effort. So I wanted to introduce it to the village because it's all set and ready to go, and actually, a lot of people have been participating already. So I wanted to share just a little bit of info about the program. Some of you might just be like, "What the heck is geocaching to start with?" But geocaching is really, it's a family activity, it's done outside, and it's really like a scavenger hunt. So people hide things all over the world for people to find. And then you basically post information on a website or on an app, and then people know, basically, they find direction to actually find whatever you hid. So I got some examples here of what this might look like. So, for example, this is an example of a cache. They come in all shapes and sizes. They could be very big, some are extremely small. One thing they have in common is that they all have some type of login site, because when you find it, you can actually write your name and the date, and that basically, that's a mark that you leave on the fact that you found this object. Sometimes also people leave things in these caches. So I'll show you this other one. Sometimes it just looks like really simple, like a box like this, and, for example, in this one, there's this little guy in there. So when you find a cache, some people like to bring things with them. They take something from the cache and then they put something else in. So it's a living activity. Again, it's great for kids, for adults, for seniors, anyone, and we have a great circuit now in Tuckahoe. So anyone can do this on their own, but what we did is we worked with the Tuckahoe History Committee to make this even more exciting. So we've placed 12 caches around the village in locations of historical importance, like Village Hall, for example, which used to be Main Street School. And it's actually really simple for you to participate. You can use your computer, you can use a smartphone, and you download an application called geocaching.com. And if you go on there and you say, "Find caches around me," you'll see all the caches that have been hidden in Tuckahoe. So a few things, so we started to, we placed some of the caches a few months ago. As I mentioned, there's 12, anywhere from Village Hall, there's one at Dock Pond, there's one at Shiloh. I'm not going to give you all the locations, but there's 12 around town. And actually, I should mention that I check on the caches every once in a while, and unfortunately, the one here has disappeared, but it will be replaced shortly. So, which I should say, so if you find something intriguing around the village that you're like, "Oh, this is kind of weird that it's here," well, just leave it there, because it's probably part of the geocaching circuit. So I'll tell you this, the caches have been found 126 times so far. So this is only in a couple of months. And as we put caches out, like literally within an hour or two, they would be like, "I found it!" Because you can actually log on your application that you actually found it. So we get to see, like, people are really excited, and it generates a lot of excitement for everyone. So I wanted to read some of the comments, because that's the other thing. Once you find a cache, you can also, you know, write a comment, or you can post a photo, which is really great. So someone wrote, I'll mention some of the places, won't give you too many hints, but there's one at the quarry by Young Place, and someone posted, "What a nice park. We never would have known about this place or about its history." "Close by by the Crestwood Train Station. It took us about half an hour. We would have never known about, but we found it. My husband and I were visiting some friends in the area, and this was our first geocache." Another one at Crestwood, "Totally worth the hour drive. The town is so cute, and this cache is right next to a bagel shop. Yum." "Parkway Casino," someone said, "It was easy to find for the kids and such a cool adventure." At Shiloh, someone wrote, "Took a few minutes to track this one. After replacing the container, we met a church parishioner, and we had a very nice chat about the church, very nice history here." And at Parkway Oval, a couple of people wrote, "Nice park, especially today with the mild temperatures. We had a nice walk, and we found the container. I enjoyed the pugilistic history about the area." And one person said, "And with this find, we found all the Tuckahoe History Committee caches. Thank you for all these great hides. We had tons of fun going out for first to finds, getting rained on, meeting lots of dogs, dogs and lots of people." So I want to encourage all of you to participate. Again, like, bring the kids, people are coming from out of town, grab a bite, you know, wherever, you know, you end up going. And to find out more information and to get started, we'll talk about this a little bit, the library has partnered with the History Committee to, you know, sponsor this program and give more information. So we'll talk about that for a second. I wanted to just say thank you to a few people who made this possible. So first of all, the History Committee, the Village Board, the previous board, but I'm sure this one is very supportive as well. And we also have some private locations, like Shiloh and Assumption Churches, who were game to play with us, so this is great. The Girl Scouts also helped in placing the caches around the village, and of course, the Tuckahoe Library. So we'll talk a little bit about the program that's coming up in a couple of days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
How you doing?
Very excited about this program. We're just thrilled to be working with the History Committee and Julie, and they work so hard. And to help you, for those of you who want to get involved, we're having a program on Wednesday night to kick it off, and Julie is going to do a slideshow presentation for people like me who don't really know anything about how to do this, and I'm sure there are others like that as well. So Wednesday night, June 9th, at 6:30, online, we're going to have online geocaching information session, and Julie will explain, you know, exactly how you can do this, the step-by-step approach. We are also going to be providing on Thursday, anybody who wants to do this, we've created passports, so that when you can use these passports to log the locations, the cache, the date, and then we have a little stamp that we created, so when you come, you can get this stamped. And anybody who finds 10 of the 12 caches, we have a little historical gift, a little keepsake for you from the Tuckahoe History Committee. So I hope that everybody can come on Wednesday night. Any questions, you can call us, but these will be available, they're going to be at the library, so anytime, you know, from Thursday on. But while I am here, I'm also going to do the library program presentation.
That'll be later.
Excuse me?
That'll be later.
Oh, is that okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's okay.
Let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Next, we'll have a presentation from the Tuckahoe Housing Authority regarding community development block grant applications, and the board chair, Donald.
Greetings.
Hi.
Donald, welcome. Chairman of the Tuckahoe Housing Authority. I live at 14 Lake Avenue. I understand this is going to be a fairly simple presentation. The Tuckahoe Housing Authority has developed requests for four grants, each roughly of $200,000 each, to improve the physical operation of the Tuckahoe Housing Authority. The first one is for elevator replacement in Four Union, along with some upgrades to Four Union. The other three are basically the same ones, to upgrade the kitchens in all of the other buildings. This is a fairly important thing to do, because the kitchens have gotten kind of old and used up, and we would very much like to replace them. The elevator is basically on its last legs and is failing constantly, so it's reached the point where it's time to replace that as well. That's it.
Thank you.
I can give it to Mr. Burke here?
Yeah, sure. And in keeping with the history theme, we'll have an update from the Historical Preservation Task Force.
Hello, Jenny Steinhegen, South High Street. Thank you, Mayor Dino and members of the board, for the opportunity to update you on the activities of the Historic Preservation Task Force that have taken place over the past month since our inception. We are happy to recognize we have grown by two members. Josh Caccione and Laszlo Castellanos have been appointed, and we are very happy to welcome them. Josh brings us experience as an active military participant. He served our country, and we are grateful for his service and also grateful for the experience and insight that he brings to our team. He has worked on intelligence matters. He also has multiple degrees in history, with a special interest in American history, early American history, and of course, local history. We welcome Josh. Laszlo Castellanos has a background in architecture, and he has experience in building design and construction, working with municipal planning. He's worked on historic buildings, in New York City included, and he has a specialty in exterior wall and building envelope consulting. So very applicable experience and a great wealth of knowledge, so we're very lucky to have them aboard. I mentioned that we are tasked with researching legislation, and that we were going to start with looking at Westchester County's legislation for historic preservation. Out of the 20, we've honed in on seven that we're looking at, we're analyzing, we're seeing why this legislation was put in place, what's working, what's not, how it's maintained, the relationship between the towns and their communities. We have also established a relationship with the New York State Office of Historic Preservation. We have an upcoming meeting with them. There are three important things with working with the state that we're interested in. The first is, when I mentioned legislation, when you start looking into what Westchester has, you see a lot of similarities, and that's because New York State has a model law for historic preservation legislation. They've laid out exactly how to enact legislation, and they offer you help throughout that process. So of course, we're looking at that model law. They also offer presentations, which we hope to have for our team in the very near future, and they have a program, the Certified Local Government Program, which I mentioned, because in order to qualify for the Certified Local Government Program, you already have to have historic preservation legislation enacted, along with an official board, whether it's a Landmarks Commission or Heritage Preservation Commission, you have to have a board that oversees that legislation, but then you qualify for grants. New York State has a very robust program and some serious funding available to municipalities that take advantage of that, so we're very excited. We're also tasked with looking at sites and structures. Julie mentioned a bunch of Tuckahoe's history that we are celebrating through geocaching and that we'd like to look at for potential historic preservation. The Tuckahoe History Committee has a wealth of information. If I can mention Nick Zanzano, Marge White, Alice White, Elaine Provenzano, they've been putting a ton of time into logging and uploading information. Nick Zanzano, I believe, just finished his 100th binder that he scanned of Tuckahoe history, and a lot of that is made available on the Facebook page of the Tuckahoe History Committee. So we certainly encourage people to look there for information. We're going there for our sites, our analysis. And I mentioned that model law that New York State has. In that model law, are laid out five criteria for site identification, what qualifies them as historically significant, so we will certainly be looking at that. One of the sites that is at the top of our list here in Tuckahoe is the Ward House. It's also known as Ward's Tavern, for a period was known as the Marble Palace. Richard Forliano, the Eastchester Town Historian, is our resident expert on all things Ward House and can certainly be available for any questions or additional information. For those who may not be familiar with the Ward House, it's on Route 22 on White Plains Road, right at the top of Winter Hill. This house has an incredible history and is significant in the American Revolution. It was built in the 1750s during skirmishes leading up to the American Revolution. It was burnt down, but it was rebuilt in 1790. So when you drive by that house, that house has been standing in that same place since the 1790s. New maps have been uncovered that show that Ward House in that same location, that these maps that were shared with the Patriots that were used by, you know, the loyalists and others, the skirmishes. Bodies have potentially been associated with this site, considered by many to be hallowed ground. So a significant structure for Tuckahoe, for Westchester, for the founding of our nation. So it's a Concordia Residence Hall, but we know that things are changing with Concordia, so we're certainly keeping an eye on that. Independent of the task force, a Friends of the Ward House group has been formed that we are aware of, and a lot of people are looking into what can be done. But we have a lot more to do. We've been busy. I look forward to reporting back with our updates. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from anyone on the board?
I do have one, Jenny. Just, you know, have you discussed at all the Ward House with the county as, you know, potentially them being interested in helping?
That's a good question. We've been working with the Westchester County Historical Society, and it's certainly on their radar. At one of their recent meetings, there were representatives of the county government, so I believe some of that is on their radar, but I'm happy to look into that more, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny, and the task force for all the work you guys, and thank you to Richard Forliano for his advice and his guidance. We appreciate it.
You guys are doing an excellent job.
All right, so we have the adoption of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the May 10, 2021, meeting?
So moved.
Second.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor, and now the public has the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items. If there's anyone that would like to address the board on any agenda items in person, anyone here? Is there anyone?
Yes. Yeah, wait till that later? Okay.
Okay, sorry, we'll have that as a part of the discussion. Anyone on Zoom who would like to address the board on any agenda items? Okay, so having said that, we will go to our resolutions. So the first resolution is authorizing the use of the Washington Street and Union Place for the Tuckahoe Housing Authority Annual Family Day on August 7th, with the rain date of August 8th, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. May I have a motion authorizing the use of Bella Vista for a block party on Saturday, September 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., with a rain date of September 12th?
So moved. Second.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor, fun times. Also, we'd like to, I'd like a motion authorizing the use of Main Street Park on Saturday, June 19th, from 11:00 to 6:00 p.m. for a Juneteenth event.
So moved.
Second.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Authorizing an agreement with Westchester Jewish Community Services to run a six-week program at the community center with final terms and conditions to be approved by the village administrator and village attorney. May I have a motion?
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Question?
Do we know what the program is? I'm just...
Yes, David, if you could give us a summary again. Oh, need a mic. Can we buy an extra mic around you? Can we afford one?
We are working on it. So it's a program, the Weiner Academy for Young Women, it's an after-school program. It's a six-week summer learning academy. I do have a lot more information in regards to a lot of the stuff they are looking to do, activities, wellness workshops, discussion groups, theme activities, enrichment activities, team-building activities, field trips, community service, personal development.
Okay.
And they're renting the community center?
Yes.
Great.
So may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. May I have a motion authorizing the submission of an application to the Westchester Urban County Consortium for the block grant program for the playground upgrades at Union Place Park in the amount of $160,000. Fifty percent of the total project cost, or 80,000, would be contributed by the village.
So moved.
Second.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. And the next resolution also involves a block grant program for the ADA ramp and sidewalk improvements on Columbus Avenue in the amount of $329,600, with 50% of the total project cost, or $164,800, contributed by the village.
So moved.
Second.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Resolution number seven, authorizing another block grant program for sidewalk improvements to the Tuckahoe Main Street in the amount of $172,370. Fifty percent of the project cost, or $86,185, to be contributed by the village.
So moved.
Second.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor, and may I have a motion for the next block grant program for sewer repairs and relining Midland Place in the amount of $299,640, or 50% of the project cost of $149,820 to be contributed by the village.
So moved.
Second.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. And I think a lot of people will be happy to hear, number nine, authorizing the awarding of the village bid for traffic signal replacements at various locations in the village, which are named there, to the low bidder, Verde Electric Maintenance Corp., in the amount
So moved.
Second.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. And number 10, authorizing the modification of the license and fee schedule for administrative fees for work processed or completed without proper permit. In addition to other fees, shall be 10% of the cost of construction with a minimum administrative fee of $1,000 and a maximum fee of $15,000 for work completed or proposed up to $425,000. Cost of construction completed or proposed greater than $425,000 and $1 shall have a maximum administrative fee of $25,000. May I have a motion?
Second.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. And we need to pay bills, so may I have a motion authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $305,81,099, to be exact, huh, David?
So moved.
Second.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. And we need a motion authorizing the sale of the following items to the highest bidder, a 2013 Ford Explorer to J. Bravo in Whitesboro, New York, for $13,100, as well as the DSR Dirt Bike, which was well sought after by P. Oremirad from Tannersville, New York, for $1,025. And further authorizing the disposal of the equipment that was not bid in a manner prescribed by New York State law. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor. And the next item on the agenda is a discussion regarding stadium lighting. For those who may not remember, a couple years back, we had Concordia College come forth proposing the installation of stadium lights, and there was a lot of feedback from the community now that Concordia, the stadium lights were never put up, but now that Concordia has sold the college to Iona, this issue has, you know, been revived. So we'd like to have some discussion and hear from the residents reviving, result, yes, so, thank you, thank you, Gary. You're getting your exercise in today. So if anyone would like to speak on the issue of the stadium lighting, now's the time. Thank you.
Thank you. My name's Ed Conway, 8 Winslow Circle. I'd like to thank the board for including the discussion of stadium lighting tonight. I think a number of the members of the community would like the board to move forward with the explicit prohibition of the stadium lighting in Tuckahoe in the zoning code, to ensure that it is well-known and understood by all, given the history that we had with Concordia a couple of years ago. Concordia had proposed field enhancements and stadium lighting on the soccer field located on Rose Avenue, right on the edge of the village. There was much community opposition at the time, there were many meetings, and also there was a petition of over 250 signatures opposing the lighting, and the proposal was finally withdrawn, as you mentioned, from Concordia after many discussions, meetings, and some news coverage, too. It was hard to believe for many, given at the time that the proposal was allowed to continue, given that the area is zoned residential. There are significant zoning codes that need to be adhered to within residential zone, but discussion on the lighting was allowed to continue, which didn't make sense to many of us. We'd like the board to quickly refer this explicit prohibition to the zoning board so that it can be implemented in the next month. We believe that it is an easy change and can quickly be added, as there was much discussion previously, and there was much community support for this. Although there is no current stadium lighting proposal presented, as we know, we believe it is critical to move this forward quickly. We believe these 60-to-80-foot light towers have no place in our quiet residential neighborhood. The large imposing structures do not fit with the character of our village. They are taller than most of the local apartment buildings around us, and also they tower over the houses in the community. They're also very large for the small lot size on the former Concordia soccer field or elsewhere in our village, for that matter. We mentioned on our Tuckahoe Village website, "Tuckahoe is a friendly, quaint village, a community which has been characterized by many years as the best kept secret in Westchester. We say that we're less than one square mile in size, and it gives the residents the opportunity to walk to most of our businesses and excellent restaurants, and our award-winning Main Street Development has created a safe and inviting stroll down to our charming village. These lights create much light pollution, destroying the quiet residential neighborhood we try to maintain, where we can enjoy walks with our families and our dogs on our quiet, softly lit streets. These lights also bring associated detrimental effects, such as traffic congestion and noise from sound systems for practices and games at night throughout the entire year. This prevents the community from enjoying their homes and yards in the evening after a long day's work. We hope tonight you will quickly expedite this proposal to the zoning board so that we can be clear about the protection of our village, character, and our quiet neighborhoods." Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else?
Can I ask a question?
Sure. Just one question.
Mr. Conway, you mentioned that the lights are often taller than buildings. Do you have an idea of how tall... Do you have an idea of how tall they are? Oh, wow, okay, thank you.
Hey, Anthony Fiori through Midland Place. On the stadium lighting, so this is for the permanent structure, what about the portable ones? Can they bring portable ones? Is that going to be the degenerate types?
Well, nothing has been brought up yet, so we're listening to residents' feedback so that the board can then come back and make a decision.
Just in case it comes upon the zoning board, I'm part of it, you know.
Right, right.
Find out which is which.
Gary, did you want to weigh in? No, oh, okay. Okay. Anyone else have any input regarding the stadium lighting? Never.
My name is Larry Marciano. I used to play baseball on the soccer field at Concordia. Used to sneak into their gym and play basketball in their gym. Goes back a long way, but we have to keep our residential areas residential, okay? Lights 60 feet tall, 40 feet tall. You have property, okay, on the south side of Winslow Circle that are, their property line is up against the soccer field, okay? And I don't know of any other place with lights other than in Mount Vernon, okay, where I used to play softball, but that's another story. But we have to keep the picture of Tuckahoe the way it is, a community that you want to come to, you want to raise your family, and you want to have peace and quiet at night. When you go outside for a little barbecue without any lights from adjoining property, okay, annoying the midnight. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
There will be more if need be to attend, okay? But I'm sure the board has a good idea, okay, of where we're coming from, and to keep the look of Tuckahoe, Tuckahoe.
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So, there's someone on Zoom, okay? So the person on Zoom, can you state your name and address, please? Uh, we can't, we can't hear you. We did, but we don't hear him now. We hear you okay.
Okay. So, I also, I'm Mr. Conway, and I won't take too much of the board's time, but I definitely want to say I'm a supporter of any type of prohibition. Our backyard faces the field, especially the sun, it's bad for the faces of the field. A, the aesthetics of having stadium lights under here is to be a bit ridiculous. As known by Mr. Conway, we're a small town, and to have these huge stadium lights up just doesn't be very consistent with what I, our town, represents. And also, encouraging events at night, again, just going to create, I think, issues with parking, with noise, so I really think that, you know, if the folks are using that space, wanting to use it, I think, is best for the day, especially for many, many years, so that's basically just wanted.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So the board has already begun discussions regarding the lighting, and we want the residents to know that your comments are taken to heart, and we will be making some decisions very soon. You're welcome. So that will take us to our departmental reports to the board. So we'll start with the police report. Will you be doing it, Lieutenant? Okay, so the chief is not here, so Lieutenant Zerolnik will.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just a couple of things I'd like to mention. We had a nice event at the Community Safety Day this past Saturday at the Main Street Park, which was well-attended from the community as well as our elected officials, so I just want to thank everyone for joining us, and a quick shout-out to the Community Fund, who is our lead benefactor and supporter for all the things that we give away. We did have 10 lucky young people to take home bicycles, and we were very excited to see that, more so just the event in general that we weren't able to host because of COVID reasons last year. So we're back at it, and it was really nice to be there. I'll piggyback that with another event, another community outreach we're going to have, should be on Wednesday, June 30th, is Eric Cohen with the Cop. We've networked and reached out to our partner, Chris Power from Swirl and Joy. This was something, again, we did two years back, and it was well-attended, and we really enjoyed it. So we have tentative agreements on Wednesday, June 30th, to host that event as well. And lastly, we just completed the state initiative, the Buckle Up New York Seat Belt Clicker Ticket Program. It ran from May 24th to June 5th, just shy of two weeks, and that was obviously checkpoints throughout the village to maintain seatbelt compliance. And those who are non-compliance, we received some summonses, but we are happy to report more or less that compliance is up, that people are driving with their seatbelts. And that's really all we have.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have our superintendent of DPW, Frank DiMarco. Hey, Frank.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board.
Good evening.
I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I have some catching up to do. I just want to start with the Con Edison gas upgrades that occasionally we have throughout the village, and presently, we're having the upgrades on the Hill Street, Wallace Avenue, Pleasant Avenue, North High Street, and Cameron. When Con Edison designates areas like this for a gas upgrade, it's only because their gas infrastructure has been compromised. The gas infrastructure is well over 100 years old, and when they do test for gas leaks, when hammered abundance of gas leaks within a certain timeframe, they realize at this point, regardless of weather, that they need an upgrade. So that's what's happening right now. The contract that's there right now is working exponentially. Process is moving real quick. They have an upgraded method of installing these gas mains nowadays, which makes the process a lot quicker. They're hooking up, they're running their gas mains, and then they're equally going lateral into the homes, where historically, they would do the gas main first, and then the laterals come back and do the laterals into the homes. But now they're expediting these all as they go along and processing it much quicker. Finalizing, we're in the process of finalizing EV charging stations throughout the village of Tuckahoe. Just to bring everybody up to date, we are trying to procure 24 charging stations, which is 48 car-charging ports throughout the village in various locations, starting with Depot Square, Marble Dell Road, most of all parking lots, whether it be Lake Avenue Parking Lot, Main Street Parking Lot, Oak Avenue Parking Lot, Columbus Avenue North, and also the Crestwood Area. At no charge to the village at all. Between Nicerta sponsoring the rebates and also the installation costs is sponsored by Con Edison. So within the next three months or so, we're looking to hopefully begin the installation of these charging stations. Some of the projects that are taken on by, overseen by DPW, were really taken on by the Beautification Committee and a private funding source. But most of the prominent projects that we're working on right now is the Welcome to Tuckahoe sign coming down from Tuckahoe Road into Garet Street. We've located an historical Tuckahoe stone pillar, so we've positioned it right now to where we think we want it. It was kind of in a way of a utility pole, but fortunately, but unfortunately enough, there was an accident last week where someone ran into utility pole, and it had to be repositioned. So first thing that morning, I met with Con Edison, I go, please, we need to move the pole, we can't, we can't, I know, no, you understand, we need to move this pole. And they did, they moved it four feet to the left, which gave me more visibility for this new Welcome to Tuckahoe gateway sign. We're also looking to move forward with the lower Loc Avenue Parking Lot, sidewalk replacement, there's going to be aluminum fence there right now. It's going to be replaced, right now, it is a chain-link fence and an old pipe-and-rail fence that don't match at all. So we're putting, we're installing a more decorative aluminum fence. But also, behind the fence area in the MTA property, we're cleaning up all the shrubs, the plantings, removing all the dead trees, and hopefully planting some new and maintenance-free shrubs. Also, part of the project is also stuck going painting the walls that surround the lower parking lot, because we do have plans for artwork that is supposed to be installed in that area. So we're trying to dress up that wall in preparation for artwork that the school has put together in their art class, and they've been working on it for years, but there's different stages of this artwork that I could present at some point as well. Also, Starbucks at Depot Square presently store their garbage, garbage container in a parking lot. It's a mess, it's always filled with debris and garbage, so we're looking to build a shed area so they could isolate these garbage containers and also be shielded and obscured by vision, so no one could see anything that might be happening, or debris and litter that might be spilled over in this one area, keeping that Starbucks area clear. Also, we're looking to impose upgrades in the Depot Square. And the work that would follow, I'll let you know what the work would be in the upcoming meetings, decorative lighting, maybe some paver work, and we'll discuss that. Everything is still in conceptual stages in the process. And you know, with all the other things that DPW does, hanging the flowers that were supplied to us and funded by the Beautification Committee and Susan Chiermarra, and a lot of little other things which include benches and flower pots and other things that, and flowering within a village has never been to the degree it is today. It just looks amazing. Paving, Tuckahoe took advantage of the low interest rate in the bonding, so we are looking to pave some more roads this year. Don't forget, Tuckahoe has 14 linear miles of roads. We need to pave one mile a year to catch up with our paving. Lifespan on a road today is about 12 to 14 years. With the recyclable material that's going into these roads, they're not lasting like they used to, and the base of the roads are just not holding up like they used to either. So we're doing the best we can to keep up with the paving of the roads and keeping everything aesthetically pleasing and safe, most importantly. Food scrap recycling seems to be the topic the last month. I have other municipalities that are reaching out to us, other municipalities that want to take it aboard, and I don't know why they have so many questions, just take it on. Curbside pickup, I'd like to pleasantly announce that we are formally picking up food scrap recycling curbside, but I do ask that they are safely placed by the curb, that they do have a lid on them. I prefer that everybody purchases our kits that we sell at DPW. For $20, you have the counter kit, and you also have the curbside food scrap recycling kit that locks, and it's safe. You don't get any rodents, or squirrels, or animals looking to eat the food that you're putting out for curbside pickup. So with that said, we are formally picking up curbside, at curbside food scrap recycling. It's Tuesday, Tuesday afternoon. Food scrap recycling is taking off.
Are you doing it, Dan?
It's really, it's mounting every week, every month, the numbers are climbing. Residents feel rewarding enough to come and bring us their food scraps, and I ask them, you know, and I tell them, you know, we're going to be picking up curbside. They feel, they feel they're to be rewarded by coming down, and, you know, and we'll occasionally have a talk with them and tell them thank you. The numbers are definitely climbing, so. A part of this is also not only food scrap recycling, and what we're trying to introduce, I have six intern WISE program students from Eastchester High School working with me this year, and they're absorbing our food scrap recycling program, but most importantly, I want to educate and public outreach on food management, which is very important, people don't realize that. It's going to take a while for me to get my mother to do this, but food management is very important. You'd want people to go out and overspend on food, overbuy on food, wasteful food spending, food that gets thrown out. I'd rather have food that could be given to those in need. So what the interns are doing is trying to redirect the food into food recycling to those in need. They're hooking up restaurants, it's a food rescue, they're hooking up restaurants with organizations so they could deliver food to those in need, instead of throwing it waste or food scrap recycling. So food scrap recycling and food management and redirecting food to those in need are all a part of food scrap recycling. Food scrap recycling takes up 60 to 70% of our weight in food scraps, so if we could take that number down, the more weight, the more moisture, the more moisture, the more energy it costs to process this food and burn it, which is what Westchester County does. They burn it for fuel, but we want to take that weight out of there and burn less, use less fuel to burn, and compost. You know, we want to take this soil, this food scrap back to our amendment, which is our soil. Last but not least, mosquito control has been a big question the past couple of years in the village of Tuckahoe. About four years ago, Westchester County took on mosquito control, and what they would do is they would put the lavaicide tablets in each catch basin every year. But they decided not to do that because it wasn't really cost-effective for them, but they left each municipality to take care of it on their own. We couldn't do it yet last year, obviously, with COVID, but we took it upon ourselves this year to properly file for the paperwork and have someone help us drop the lavaicides in each catch basin this year. We're beginning that process tomorrow. We've also, being that we have a quarry, a lake, a river, and we do recommend, and the county does recommend, dropping minnows in these lakes. And what the minnows do is they eat all the lava, the breeding of the lava and mosquitoes. So this year, we placed about 2,000 to 3,000 minnows within the quarry, the quarry. And between that and the lavaicide, the lavaicide is not harmful to your aquatic life and to humans as well, so we're looking forward to this process. That's all I have.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Elaine, you can come up now for the library report. Thank you.
Hi, I didn't introduce myself before, sorry. I'm Elaine Provenzano, and I work at the library, I'm the children's library, and I also live at 11 River Street. I'm happy to announce that the library is now open. And in order to, you know, maintain our health and safety standards, we do ask that you continue to wear masks, and we have some limits to, you know, we ask you to come and browse, you can just come in and browse around for about 30 minutes. So far, we haven't been overrun, but just to make sure that everybody can comfortably do so. And you can check our guidelines on the website, but I will tell you that our hours of operation are 10:30 to 7:30, Monday, Wednesdays, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday from 10:30 to 5:30, and Saturdays from 10 to 2:00. And we also do allow you to use the computers for up to 30 minutes. I wanted to tell you, in addition to the program that we're having Wednesday on geocaching, we have our summer reading kickoffs coming up. Most of our programs will still be on Zoom. We do have a few outdoor events that we will plan, weather permitting. So, starting with the teens, next Monday, we have an outdoor tie-dye event, ages 11 and up, and that's Monday, June 14th at 4:30. We have someone who is going to teach you how to design a unique tie-dye t-shirt in your favorite colors. We will be providing some t-shirts and the materials, so I hope that you'll join us, and that is, again, going to be an outdoor event. We will have to reschedule in case of bad weather. The adult summer reading kickoff will be Cooking Around the World on Monday, June 21st at 6:30. Annette Zito will demonstrate how to make zucchini noodles with deconstructed pesto and Italian cheesecake, and you can learn all about our summer reading program as well, so sign up for that. And the bubble bus is coming for the children's summer reading kickoff. That's going to be outside, Wednesday, June 23rd at 4:00. That's going to be outside, Wednesday, June 23rd at 4:00 PM. I think it's time to celebrate with opening these doors to have the bubble bus come, right? So I hope you can all join us for that, and that's for kids ages, families and kids ages 0 to 11. In addition, we have a Father's Day craft tomorrow, Tuesday, June 8th at 4 o'clock. So you can sign up on Zoom for that. And we are very excited to have storytime in the parks, in the park, Circuit Avenue Park, every Tuesday at 11:00 AM. So we had almost 60 people the past two Tuesdays that we did it, and David said, "Go right ahead and continue," again, weather permitting, or we'll be on Zoom. Friday storytimes will still be on Zoom. A few other things coming up is we now have a weekly arts, art class for children ages 7 to 10, starting on June 22nd, and that will run through August. So that's Tuesdays. And we have our two classes coming up. Well, we had one today. We have, if you want to learn about Canva, if you want to do some desktop publishing, Faith Jarrell will be teaching about how to design flyers, booklets, cards. That's on June 21st at 3:30. And you know about our recurring programs, our virtual meditation on Wednesdays at 12. We have yoga on Thursdays at 5:30. You can check the calendar for the dates. And Tuesdays tomorrow, we have online Tai Chi at 9 o'clock. But I also wanted to tell you one other thing. We have a special program, Tibetan Sound Healing with Karen Reeds. I don't know if any of you have been to that. And that's at Wednesday, June 16th at 7:00 PM. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you.
We have so many wonderful things happening in this village. Yeah. So Gary, do you have anything? Camille?
Yes. The village tax bills will mail at the end of May. If you have not received your bill, please email me at cdsalvo@tuckahoe-ny.com. Please also note that the tax bill program neglected to put the tax rate in the proper box on the first day of bills, which is $5,97.0635 per thousand. We also have a tax collection box in front of the village clerk's office for your new needs. Also, if you would like to view your parcel, the tax roll is already on our website. On another note, I would like to remind all the new wardner appointees that have not signed the old book because of the pandemic. Please, at their convenience, come in and do so as soon as possible.
Maybe you should give them a deadline. Camille and sign though.
So as Mr. DeMarco mentioned in his presentation, we do have, you know, the significant amount of funding coming in. It would be new curb works, pavers, and benches and things like that with the decorative lights. Like he said, the finalized plan has not yet been completed. So we're gonna, you know, we're having Carolina, who works here, gonna design something and keep the board kind of updated and again, to make sure that we're all in agreement of how it's gonna look. But it is a significant amount of funding. We do thank the beautification committee for kind of funding it our way, and it's gonna be a great improvement, so.
Thank you. Okay, and miscellaneous business, next village board meeting will be on July 12th, 2021. And then we'll go on to trustee reports, and we'll start with trustee Lang.
Thank you, Mayor. So cheers to the beautification committee for all the wonderful things they're doing. That's great. So finally, I'm able to report, I'm sorry.
That's why I started writing it, Danny.
Yeah, right, I'm hip. So finally, I'm happy to report that the bus problem down at Depot Square has been rectified. After numerous failed attempts at using the proper channels to correct the problem, I gave up and reached out to our county executive himself, showed him the videos that I had taken. He agreed that there's a problem, and he put me in contact with Andy Zeigler, who handles county buses. He told me he could help Tuckahoe, and help he did. We will no longer have to deal with two to three buses blocking our meters and handicap spaces. From now on, there will only be one bus permitted in Depot Square at a time. We may call it Depot Square, but it is far from a bus depot, and the Westchester Beeline has to understand that the center of our village will not be some staging area for their buses. So thanks for your help, Andy. Well appreciated. Just one other thing, Miss Mayor. I would like to thank the members of the VFW for all their hard work and putting together yet another wonderful day of remembrance. I encourage all, I encourage everyone, and most of all, young people, to join us next year. We make our way around, we make our way around the village, checking out all the monuments and listening to the stories of our fallen heroes, told by our very own heroes, told by our very own heroes, our VFW members. So remember the sacrifices, respect their decision to serve, and reflect, they gave their tomorrow so we can enjoy our today. That's all, Ms. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Trustee Howell.
Yes, thank you. First, I'd like to congratulate the new members of the Eastchester and Tuckahoe School Boards. They'll start their terms in July. They'll have a challenging year ahead of them as we return to normal school from, you know, I think we've turned the corner on COVID, but still some work to do. There was some confusion today on the whole mask issue at schools, so the governor did speak about it today. Masks on in-school, masks off out of school when the kids are playing at recess. And he also mentioned that, you know, one big focus of the state right now is to get the kids vaccinated. And we found out that the county will have a local site for vaccination if we can get at least 100 people committed to that. So I'll be working with trustee Cronin. Eastchester School District is open to hosting, and we'll work across the school districts to see if we can't get a site local for that to happen. For Eastchester Schools, June 11th, this Friday, their elementary school field days, and that evening, the high school has its annual film festival. So I encourage people to attend. It's usually very, very good. I promised to report on several of our large development projects in the village. So first, I think probably if anybody drove down Marble Dale today, you saw the big stacks of, which are pieces of actually a modular home that will go on to the lot where the foundation has now been built in Maynard and Rogers after an extraordinary amount of rock breaking, which had to occur. That was basically a rock, that lot, which was taken apart, and now the modular home will be put on top, and no more rock breaking. Another project that's, looks like it's been sitting for a while is the condominiums that are to be built on the Lime Kiln Road. And that has been delayed because there's a potential transfer for the property from one group to another. And until that's resolved, the construction won't start. But it is hoped that that transaction will happen soon. And finally, the building across from the Riverview condominiums, that oddly shaped triangle building. People have asked about that, and you can see that the construction has begun on it, and the cinder blocks have gone up. They had hoped to do some framing right after, but one of the things I'm sure most people have heard on the news, lumber is not only scarce, but also three times the price that it was over a year ago. So that is slowing down, just in general, a lot of big construction projects as our supply, other kind of building supplies. So that's the update on those three big development projects. The next zoning board meeting will be on June 9th with a 6:45 working session and a 7:30 meeting. I had previously mentioned, and I think it's still on the agenda for this month, is an interpretation at 377 Marble Dale Road where there's interest in some creative zoning to allow multiple lots for residential buildings. So folks on Marble Dale may want to continue to watch that. For planning board, the next meeting will be June 15th. The working session was held last week. You can see that from last month, approval was granted by the planning board for the restaurant on Marble Dale. So there's a sign up there for rent. They're still finishing their permitting, but that's moving along as well. And the only new item on the agenda is for 145 Main Street where there's a business, a local business, looking to build an office and warehouse at that space. We also have an open position on the planning board, so if anyone is interested in that, please feel free to contact any board member or David Burke directly. June is primary month, so I just wanted to remind everybody that the COVID option is still available to get an absentee ballot. And you need to apply by June 15th via the state absentee portal or by emailing westabsente@westchestergov.com. Or you can apply in person at the Board of Elections up until June 21st. The Tuckahoe Challenge website, the Run Sign Up, and so if you go onto the internet and Google Run Sign Up, and then look for the Tuckahoe Challenge, it's active. We have 20 people signed up so far, so that's very exciting. We've had businesses reach out to us for sponsorship. So I'm working with the Eastchester-Tuckahoe Chamber of Commerce and the schools to promote the race. If anybody's interested in volunteering, we could always use some more volunteers. So please let me or John Galuzzi know if you're interested in helping with the race. We'll find a job for you. And starting next week, Tuesdays at 6:00 AM, if anybody wants to meet up in the front of Crestwood Train Station for a three-to-five mile run in the park, I'll be there. I run slow, so it's gonna be fine. Wednesday nights at 7:00 PM, we're gonna start at the library and do progressively walking from a half mile all the way up to three miles, if anybody wants to join us for that. And then finally, I just wanted to give everybody, Gary, you gonna join us?
Gary's joined.
Before we move on from planning and zoning, I just want to let everybody know it's gonna be held by Zoom this month. I know there was some confusion last month with people showing up to village hall for the meetings, but they will be by Zoom this month. It's hard because the notices sometimes go out saying it's going to be here. But we're just watching what the laws are and seeing when we'll get back here.
Right, so both are gonna be Zoom until further notice, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And lastly, I just wanted to give a shout out to a member of the Gertson family, Emily Gertson, who's the daughter of Gary and Ann Gertson, and she qualified to swim in Olympic time trials last week. It was very exciting. I had my whole work watched, and I just wanted to, yep, to acknowledge that. It's a pretty big deal. And I'm predicting right here and now that Owen Gertson, based on his last Tuckahoe Challenge win of a gold medal, will be qualifying in the near future as well for the track and field.
Predictions here, too. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Trustee Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. On yesterday, Tuckahoe Troop 19, which is the girls' troop, had a car wash fundraiser at the community center. The troop would like to thank everyone who helped make their car wash a success. The primary elections will be held at the Tuckahoe Community Center, 71 Columbus Avenue on June 22nd from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And the early voting for the primary election will be at the Eastchester Library, 11 Oak Ridge Avenue, Eastchester, on Saturday, June 12th, and Sunday, June 13th, from noon to 5:00 PM. Also, on Monday through Friday, June 14th to the 19th, 8 to 4:00 PM. And Saturday, June 19th, and Sunday, June 20th, noon to 5:00 PM. And the community center also purchased a new foosball table. And for those who may not know, foosball is a classic indoor football game that kids love to play. The Tuckahoe Housing Authority on May 18th had their meeting at Four Union, and the board voted unanimously to open back up the community room at Four Union Place and also the rec room at 39 Midland Place. I was at the meeting. The tenants were very happy to hear that news. The housing authority tenants are in the progress of forming a new tenants association, and that is also great news for the tenants and the board. And on August 7th, the Tuckahoe Housing Authority will be hosting Family Day on Washington Street and are encouraging all of our village residents to come out with their families to help the Tuckahoe Housing Authority celebrate their Family Day event. ECAP, the Summer Youth Employment Program, and this is for all, all, all youth who are in school, ages 14 to 20. ECAP is now taking applications for their Summer Youth Employment Program, which starts on July 6th and ends on August 13th. ECAP is also looking to partner with the Chamber of Commerce and our local businesses to see if they have any summer employment opportunities for our local youth. The Summer Enrichment Program will also start June, I mean, July 6th and end June, excuse me, July 6th and end August 13th for children ages 7 to 12. There will be sports, art, music, and much more. This program is on a first-come-and-first-served basis and is limited to 20 children. Any businesses or individuals who would like to assist the enrichment program by helping provide lunch for the kids, please contact the area director Denise Chen at ECAP, ECAP also just completed career talk for the after-school kids, which had professionals from different careers, our local police department, a local correction officer, a local florist, a banker, a physical therapist, pharmacist, and a nurse. They all came out one time a week to speak to the kids about their future after school. ECAP has partners with Bronxville Community Garden, and they are now receiving fresh vegetables to help with the food pantry. ECAP would also like to thank the DPW for once again donating the flowers that the children plant outside the ECAP building. And last but not least, 97 families benefited from the ECAP food pantry last month. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Taylor. A lot of good stuff happening around here. Trustee Cronin?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody is well. It is very encouraging to hear news of things opening and us all coming together. It makes us feel a sense of community, and I think that's really needed right now. This is June. I would like to wish all the residents who are part of the LGBTQ+ community a happy and safe Pride Month. From the Tuckahoe Schools, I just want to send a great congratulations. Last month, the school board, budget and bond elections, the budget and bond both passed, and I'm sure they have a really interesting capital improvement project that they had planned. So congratulations to them. The Tuckahoe Schools are continuing their Adopt a Senior program that they started last year. If you are unfamiliar with this program, you can, basically, you can adopt a senior or several seniors and purchase them a small gift or a token to congratulate them for their graduation. It's a really nice program. You can pick one or several students, and so they are looking for people to make donations. If you are interested, it is, there's information in a flyer where you can fill out a form on the Tuckahoe District website, on their Facebook page, and also on my trustee page. On Friday, I had the pleasure of speaking at the fifth grade dare graduation at the Cottle School. The graduation was a great effort by school administrators and Officer Piazza, who the students affectionately refer to as Officer Evan. The Dare Program, for anyone who doesn't know, is a program supported by the Bronxville-Eastchester-Tuckahoe Community Fund, and it teaches students about the dangers of drugs, alcohol, and tobacco use, and all kinds of bullying. Officer Piazza should be commended. He does an exceptional job with the students, and they wrote these outstanding essays, which they then read at graduation. From the seniors, they continue to meet online and anticipate hopefully returning in September, as long as everything works out. Like my colleague, Mr. Lang, I would like to thank the VFW for hosting an incredible Memorial Day ceremony and celebration. I was really, truly moved. Tuckahoe has such a rich history. It's incredible, and I believe it to be one of our greatest assets. A lot of people talked earlier about our geographic history and right through historic preservation and through geocaching. I also think that the people in this village are a great font of information and our historical memory, and it's something I personally would really like to capture going forward. I will talk more about this later, but I am planning to embark on a oral history project with some of our students, student residents, where we will be documenting the stories of some of our seniors, our veterans, our lifelong residents, people who have something to talk about in terms of Tuckahoe or local history. And the idea is- And the idea is to document this, organize it, make it searchable, transcribe these interviews, and then put it into an online repository. So it's something I'm working on now, and I'll talk more about that as time goes on. It's a great way for the students to give back to the community. So if you have a young person in your life, I was a social studies teacher. This is why this is very dear to me. So if you have a young person in your life who you think might like this, because either they like history or digital storytelling, they like to spend time on computer, this might be something you would be interested, they would be interested in, feel free to reach out to me. And I believe that is it. Have a great week, month.
Thank you, Trustee Cronin. And we have, our county executive is here, George Latimer. Would you like to come up and address the board?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, members of the board. Appreciate the courtesy of being able to come and visit, give you a little update on what's happening and take back some of the suggestions of things we need to work on in county government. I'm joined tonight by Ellen Hendricks, who is our Assistant Director of Intergovernmental Programs, and she's usually the point of contact for David and the people in the administration here for issues that link us together. So I appreciate the opportunity to visit. I'll bullet through a couple of things, and then, Madam Mayor, I'll be at your disposal for any questions that you or the members of the board have. First of all, we've been tracking COVID pretty regularly as a part of our responsibilities and trying to provide the programs and services, first for testing and PPE, and now for vaccinations. I'm happy to report that as of today's numbers, we're down to 328 active cases in Westchester County. In mid-January, we had 11,500 active cases. So to go from 11,500 to 328, and all the credit goes to the people of Westchester, who have been determined to get vaccinated and move forward. Other encouraging news, if the number of active cases is the breadth of the infection, the depth of the infection is found, the number of hospitalizations and the number of fatalities, the last number we have on hospitalizations, that there are 30 people, I'm sorry, 26 people that are hospitalized at this moment in time. Back in January, we were at a peak, 588 people hospitalized. That's the severity of the disease to come to the hospital where you couldn't fight it at home. So to go from 588 to 26 is good news. And in the last week, we lost two individuals, two fatalities, to COVID. That number is well below anything we've seen since almost the beginning of the fatalities of the pandemic a year ago. Every death is a tragedy. If someone's family is affected by the loss of a loved one, a friend, a neighbor, so I don't want to minimize human beings to be statistics, but we have a very good chance in the next couple of days of going a whole week with no fatalities, which would be a sign of progress. On the flip side, you know, we have to attribute it to primarily the amount of vaccinations that we have. We have vaccinated already in Westchester County 53% of all Westchester residents. That's both full vaccinations, go through the two-week period of time after your second shot, if it's a two-shot protocol, if it's one-shot Johnson &amp; Johnson, two weeks after that. And we have, at the point of at least one vaccine dose, over 60% of our population. So by three to four weeks' time, you get the second dose, will be over 60% fully vaccinated. The target market right now are young people, because most people in my age category will drop down to your age category than those younger than you. Pretty much, if you wanted the vaccine, you can get it, and you've gotten it by now. At the beginning, it was a manhouse of fear and concern. Some people drove to Potsdam, New York, or went into the city, what have you. Now, if you want a vaccination, it's easy to get. The county center, you can walk up and get a vaccination without having a prior appointment. But it's the younger folks now, under the age of 16, for which the Pfizer product has been authorized, 12 to 16, and you're seeing that's where we're getting a lot of our new vaccinations, and that will get our numbers somewhere, I think at the end of the day, up somewhere above the 2/3 mark, 65, 67% vaccinated. What's left beyond that will be hard to reach. There are people who have vaccine hesitancy or just a philosophical opposition to being vaccinated. It is bigger than what a county, a village, a town can do to persuade people at that point, but we've tried to do innovative things. We've got members of the New York Knicks on public service announcements and Rockettes and all this stuff, and we're going to try, you know, some of the current rap and hip-hop stars to reach to people of a certain age, trying to get them motivated. But bottom line is, the progress in vaccinations, I think, pretty clearly is reflected in the drop of infections. But we are at a point now where we're watching more of the society open up. You, just like I, we've seen what happened over the last weekend. Everybody is dying to get back to normal outside activity, a little bit of it on Memorial Day. The weather was a little better on Monday, Memorial Day. Over the weekend, lots of events in person, and you're going to see more of that as we go forward. So the county has very little control over the decisions made on what to open and to what level. Those decisions reside with the governor. He's used his executive orders superior to our authority. Where we have had the authority, we opened a bicycle Sunday a year ago and again this year. Where we had the authority, we opened up the golf courses and a lot of our recreational facilities. We have, our beaches are open right now, Playland and Croton Point Park. We'll have our pools open, Four Pools, Spray Ridge, Tibbetts, Wilson Woods, and Saxon Woods will all open at the end of the month, and we're going to open Playland at the end of the month. So it's going to be open about a 10-week run this year, a little shorter than we normally would, but we're excited to have more of those things back online as we go forward. I wanted to point out, and I said this in today's municipal call, which I'm sure you know and the administrator knows, we have Mondays with all of the local government officials that get on the call. And we want to clarify that your recreational sport program, similar to the ones that we run, generally try to track what the school district does, but the mandates on schools are different than what happens in your programs and our programs. So just to be clear, for your recreational department's benefit, if any individual, child or adult, is participating in a village or recreational program, they do not need to wear masks while they are participating in the sport. If they're on the field, on the court, they do not have to have a mask on. When they go to the sidelines, whether they're, you know, a bench player and they're going to go back in the game later, or they're not called into the game, well, they're part of the sideline crew, the coach and assistants and so forth, you do not have to wear a mask if you're vaccinated. But if you're on the sidelines and you're not vaccinated, you do have to wear a mask. Now, that can affect a lot of our young people, because our young kids, you know, Little League age and Papa Warner football age, are under the age of vaccination. So masks will be required on the sidelines or the bench where you're sitting and waiting, and then in the spectator crowd, it's the same set of rules. If you're vaccinated, you do not have to have a mask on. If you have not been vaccinated, mask and social distancing. And, you know, to the greater extent, we're on the honor system. We're not asking our police or your police to go out there and start to hassle people. We know, we've seen what this virus has done, the friends that we have, we've lost. This is a little thing to ask. If you know you're not vaccinated, put the mask on and give yourself some distance. But your recreational programs and our recreational programs follow the protocol that I've just described. And so what you're hearing out there, and the governor, what he's doing with schools, that's on a different platform, and that hopefully will be resolved more the next few days. I just wanted to chat on a few other issues quickly, and then, because you've got a long agenda, and I don't want to keep you here unnecessarily late. We have, with money that we've received from the federal government, under the American Recovery Act, we have identified that we will again be able to support, as we did last year, small businesses that are having difficulty surviving because of the downturn in business because of COVID. We've seen that it affected a lot of our restaurants. It certainly affected our hospitality hotel-type locations. Some businesses have gotten through the worst of it, some are still struggling very badly, but we will have an outreach program. We're going to work through the East Chester Tuckahoe Chamber of Commerce, and the chamber itself will get a grant in order to keep their efforts going. They got one last year. It's, you know, a small $20,000, something of that nature, but we think that helps keep it going. And I've gone on some of the chamber calls, I've, you know, spoken to some of you while you're on there, because we want the small businesses all across the county, Tuckahoe in specific, to have some resources to help them get through this, and hopefully we'll be through it pretty soon as the summer and the fall goes on. We also have money we've set aside for food pantry purposes, whatever kind of programs that you have already for feeding the poor, through whatever not-for-profits that serve the people of Tuckahoe. We are putting additional money in, as we did last year. We put in $5 million of county money to help support those efforts. We're doing that again this year, and if there's someone from the organization wants to reach out to us, please do. We have connected with New York State and their Emergency Rental Assistance Program, ERAP, of course, always an acronym. This is the program to help people that face eviction because they were unable to pay their rent during their period of economic impact for COVID. The state has set up a program. The county has taken the money allocated to us and plugged it into the program, and basically, the program provides the money to the landlords to cover back rent. It doesn't go to the tenant, to the landlord, it goes right to the landlord, but the landlord has to agree not to evict the tenant so that the tenant has security in their house, in their apartment as it goes forward. There is also a companion program for those that suffer potential foreclosure. The very simple direction that we have to people is call 211. 211 is the information line that's staffed through a grant that we have with the United Way of Westchester in Putnam, and the people who are on the phones there are experienced in knowing how to direct people, and they will be directed to local housing-related not-for-profits that will help the individual apply for this benefit, because, you know, the bureaucracy of government is, you know, mind-blowing. We all know it, I know it, and we can't expect a person to just sort of figure it out on their own. So through whatever information, you can get some from us and then share it on your various communication mediums. Tell folks, in this situation, they can sign up for the program, they can get help to pay off back rent. It also covers back utility costs, so if they owe, you know, Con Edison and Water and things of that nature, that's also eligible under this program, and we can connect you to it. And then the final point I just wanted to mention, just at 100 miles an hour, is Westchester went through the same process that Tuckahoe did and every other community did, which is put together a police reform task force discussion. What matters that we did that may impact you are the programs where we thought if we created a county-wide program, then every local police force wouldn't have to create their own similar program. And the one that we're working on right now is to develop mental health crisis response teams, because we know that in even the best police force, you don't have enough manpower to be able to handle the kind of training that somebody like that would need. So we're developing, we're trying to figure out how many of these do we need, in North County, in South, you know, overnight, and however we're going to handle it. We assume that at least one person in each local police force would be trained as a point of contact, and then that person plus the response team would be able to respond. If you hear that a person is having an emotional/mental outbreak, and you don't want to send the SWAT team in to deal with them as a matter of a police action, but rather you want people to come in and sort of, you know, sort of talk them out of whatever kind of situation they're in, and most of the police departments are pretty happy to hear that we can do that. Once we get that underway, hopefully you'll be able to tap into it as you would any other county service. There are other, you know, proposals that are there, a lot of them at the county level, as we flex you, as Dr. Chief Costan.
Local issues to rep-
One bus entering our village. So thank you for your help.
You're welcome. If you remember that TV show, The A-Team, I love when a plan comes together. And then the second issue is one that the mayor and I worked with when we visited Yonkers Avenue in Tuckahoe, and we looked at the area of the Bronx River Reservation. I shared some of the information. It was a very simple follow-up note. If it missed any points, Madam Mayor, from what you recall from that day, let us know. We'll add it to it. In fairness, because our parks department is busy doing a lot of other things, we really didn't get on it fully yet, but we intend to do that. And I think the one thing for you all to consider is we discussed out there naming the park. Now, we have to research to find out that there is no name on the park. We don't know of any, but there could have been some historical name. This is a great opportunity for Tuckahoe Village to discuss, and Damon Maier, your legislator, if there is no name on the park, find, you know, the proper person to name it after, because when you give it an identity, it's a lot easier to control it and see it as a park unto its own, rather than just a big open piece of land. When it's a big open piece of land, then people do all kinds of stuff there. But we are committing to make sure we have signage there, that we have trash receptacles, that we have a place where you can get the dog waste bags, so you can pick up after, you know, the dogs, and do a number of different things. Make sure there's signage out there that tells you what you can do. We were told by the neighbors that day that all kinds of things happen out there. It's a little, you know, whatever, but they live there, they must see it, so hopefully we'll be able to respond intelligently to those neighbors. So that is the update that I wanted to give you. I appreciate the time. If there are any questions on this or any other topics, Madam Mayor, members of the board, I'm happy to try to answer it if you'd like. And then you can pull the hook.
County Executive, you want to?
Yeah, I did just want to thank you for the mobile mental health units, which I think are really, you know, something we could need, but I'd like to encourage and maybe further that discussion at another time on services for people in the village who need more than just that moment.
More long-term.
You know, long-term services, so we definitely have a need for that.
Be happy to follow up, have Commissioner Michael Oorth maybe perhaps visit with you and talk in some greater detail about the programs we do have, and then if there are gaps that you can identify, we'll take a look from there.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good, thanks.
Anyone else on the board have any questions, comments? Thank you so much, George, for coming out.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
I hope you still get home in a reasonable hour. Sorry.
We will. We're almost done. We're almost-
Thank you.
I've got the log commute, so. Thank you all very much. Have a good evening. Bye-bye now. Thank you.
Just to piggyback off what the county executive talked about with the issue of mental health in the village, many of you already know about, you know, the week of memorial of Police Week, we had, we celebrated awarding police officers who served, you know, with excellence, and we also had our memorial, and shortly after the memorial, five of our police cars were vandalized by one of the residents, and it speaks directly to what the county executive is talking about, because it was someone well-known to the police department. The police department has struggled to respond to the mental health issues of this person, and so we have been pushing the county and mental health services to really, you know, increase the types of services for our residents, not just short-term, but to Deputy Mayor's point, long-term services, and we need, they need that kind of support. So I'm glad to hear that it's, we're moving the needle in that direction, and we're going to continue to meet with the county staff and the Mental Health Services Department of the county to ensure that, in particular, the residents in Tuckahoe, we have a few that are pretty well-known to the police department, and they struggle to respond to incidents around, you know, mental health issues with the residents, and I know it becomes a bit of a burden when you have other issues that you're dealing with, and the police department then has to contend with this as well. So I just want to thank the police department, and we have Lieutenant Zerolnik here, and really just the level of professionalism and compassion that our police department shows when dealing with people who are suffering with these mental health issues is really, is pretty, it leaves me in awe sometimes, because these are situations that could really trigger emotions when people become aggressive toward you. So thank you, Lieutenant, and thank the department and the chief. Last month, we talked about some of the initiatives that the board has initiated, the Historical Task Force, as you heard today, they're up and running, they hit the ground running. We also, as the county executive talked about, the money for, to help small businesses. We have a think tank titled Post-COVID Survive and Thrive Recovery Think Tank, and we have people who are beginning to formulate some ideas around supporting businesses and activities in the village that will help drum up business, you know, for our small businesses here. So there'll be more to come about that. I also want to thank people who are just really looking to have, you know, events that bring the community together and are bringing forth plans and recommendations to have different events, like Music and Arts Festival, the Juneteenth Celebration, someone will be coming up, I'm sure, to speak about that. So it's clear that the residents are ready to get out and have some fun and come together again, and, you know, the fact that we have so many people here in person today shows that. So thank you all. I also just want to let, I got a few emails from people who saw me limping around town and wanted to know why I was limping around. Just want to let everyone know, it's just a fractured toe. I'll be okay. Thank you.
You'll still be training for the Tuckahoe Challenge.
I fractured it so that I won't have to run in the, so thank you for reaching out and for caring. I appreciate that. I also want to thank Shelley Mayer, our Senator, State Senator, Shelley Mayer, who awarded us $18,500 for, to help the police department with body, vehicle, and camera upgrades, as well as Amy Pollan, who gave us a grant for $15,000 in support of equipment for the police department. And, you know, I really want to take a moment to just thank the community fund, because there are so many beautiful things that they have done and they have funded in the village, and they continue to. So the community fund, we really owed a debt of gratitude to them, so thank you. Let's see here, I also want to thank the VFW and Vito Pinto for the Memorial Day services. I've attended a few of the services, and each year, it's something a little different, and I really enjoyed this year's service and memorials, you know, different events, because they specifically talked about residents, Tuckahoe residents who served and their stories, and that really made a difference because it made it more personal, and so I want to, you know, thank them for that and just thank, they developed, produced a video honoring the women and the men who served, and out of love for their fellow citizens. So I want to, I thank them, and I appreciate that. I also want to thank the Greenberg Central School District for inviting me to come and speak to their second-grade- speak to their second-grade class about the importance of civic engagement, and I got 36 thank-you letters. I wanted to read all 36 of them, but that would be too much. But I want to thank the principal, Ma Strangelo, teachers, Mrs. Patterson, Mrs. Forrest, and Flowers for inviting me, and a special thank you to all the students who asked a lot of really good questions. And I'd like to read two of the letters for you, because they just, I had to read. So one of them says, "Thank you, Dear Mayor Andino, thank you for visiting our classroom. I hope you get a new house, because it takes a lot of time to be a mayor." Don't I know it? "I wonder if you'll get a lot of money to be mayor?" No. "You can help people by giving them food." And this is from Kayden Gilcrest of Highview School, second grade. And I also want to thank Carolina Hamilton. She says, "Dear Mayor Andino, thank you for visiting our classroom on the computer. Can you help homeless people get clothes and food? Will you help protect all animals from danger? Also, can you please stop people from bullying others? And finally, please help the stores open up." So thank you to the Greenberg Central School District for inviting me to come and speak to the students. That's pretty cool, huh? And lastly, I just want to, you know, to talk about some, you know, something that is probably very uncomfortable for many to talk about, but, you know, after the incident that happened with the police vehicles, you know, a lot of comments, and I don't begrudge anyone from making their comments and giving their opinions about things that happened in the village, because that's what family does. I just think that I want to encourage people to be careful, that you give information that's factual, information that you actually know, not what you think or heard, and also that when you're making comments and statements about other people and their integrity, that you make sure that it's the truth. And there was one statement made, directed at me, that I want to address, and I want to make sure it's in our minutes. One of the statements made on Facebook by a former trustee, Gina Lee, states that there were things that I said behind closed doors that were very disturbing. And it's one thing to disagree with me, we're going to have differences of opinion, that's going to happen, we have different, you know, values, but when you make statements that reference my integrity, then I have to respond to that. And so the one thing that I would say is that there's anything that I have said behind closed doors or in public, that that is for public knowledge, because I am a public official. So I'm giving publicly and televised permission for anything that I've ever said behind closed doors to be stated publicly, because the residents do deserve to hear what my thoughts are on different topics. So I want to make sure that that's clear. I don't think that I've ever said anything that I won't stand by. Okay, so that is the end of my report. If there is anyone else that would like to address the board on any issues on the agenda or not, now is the time. Anybody?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm always happy to be here, and I'm happy to announce a very nice occasion that will be coming up this month, but being the consummate teacher, and I guess you're calling me Mother Diversity now, because I'm really very passionately involved in the strength of diversity. Before I announce the occasion that we're going to have, I want to read something, again, being the teacher, from the New York Times Magazine in 2019. It says, "The August of 1619, in August 1619, a ship appeared on the horizon near Point Comfort, a coastal port in the British colony of Virginia. It carried more than 20 enslaved Africans who were sold to the colonists. America was not yet America, but this was the moment it began. No aspect of the country that we be formed here has been untouched by the 250 years of slavery that followed. On the 400th anniversary of this fateful moment, it is finally time to tell the story truthfully." We are now in the 402nd anniversary of that 1619 event, and we are where I have to tell you that in my career as an educator, I started as a classroom teacher, then I was a teacher-trainer, then I was a trainer of trainers, and I knew nothing about this in all of the years that I was there until I became my own advocate for my own information. It is so important that now we can recognize what we have been as a country, what has got us here, and celebrate together those things that we can improve and share as a people. So here in Tuckahoe, on June 19th, Saturday, at the Main Street Park, we are having the celebration of what is now called Juneteenth. I love the way, that's the way our people can put language together there, you know, I love that stuff. And it's going to be a joyful, joyful time. The organizers are Adrian Mitchell, who is now, I think, one of the newest members on, what board is it?
The Planning Board.
The Planning Board.
Planning Board.
And Stephanie Palmer, who is a very, very longtime member of ECAP, and very much responsible for that good breakfast that people came at, the Martin Luther King Breakfast. Stephanie was head of that part of it. And I just have, and her daughter graduated from Tuckahoe High School last year and is now at Boston University on a full four-year scholarship.
All right.
So I give the good news so that we understand the reason we're celebrating Juneteenth is because coming from those 20 enslaved people from another continent, totally, I don't even have to tell you to think how devastating that journey has been, but look where we are. And so come with us, people. It's open to the public. June 19th, Tuckahoe, Eastchester, you two, you really need to be there. Come there and share with us the joy of Juneteenth. There's going to be food, entertainment, and you know, we know how to entertain. We also know how to... And we're going to have all kinds of poetry and literature and fun and dancing and singing and being together. Enjoy. That's on June 19th, Saturday, from 2 to 6 at the Main Street Park. And we'd like to thank you, Mayor and the board, for facilitating the use of that park at that time, and we're thanking you in advance, Frank, and the DPW, and the law enforcement, and everybody who will help us to make this the great celebration that it could be. It's the first time for Tuckahoe, and I'm so pleased that we have an environment that supports this kind of unity. And I will always say, you know, we talk about Tuckahoe being small and charming, and it is. Babies are small and charming, but they also go up to be wonderful adults and wonderful people who contribute to the growth of this beautiful nation. Come and join us Saturday, June 19th, Tuckahoe, Main Street Park. All the best times that you can have, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any... Okay, Adrian's on, okay.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to take this tonight, the board and the legislator, and me that I have been with, and, um, and, you know, students of the village, and, we have said, um, you know, Juneteenth is a very important celebration, and the first time it's going to be here. So, um, we're just going to share this time, and it's just moments, and our time is so sensitive nowadays, and it's all about, and like, everyone to participate in, um, in the history, about, and learn about the history, about Juneteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adrian.
Okay, anyone else that's in person that would like to address the board on any issue, any matter? Nobody? Anyone on Zoom? Anyone else? That's it? Okay, so if there's no one else, we will say thank you, Tuckahoe, and we'll see you next month.